Row call.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Present.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is the approval of the minutes. Item A is the regular session April the 12th, 2016. You've had an opportunity to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. Item B is approval of the minutes of the special call meeting April the 25th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Got a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none, thank you. Under item four, I would briefly like to go over some information concerning the fire truck that the city of Newport donated. At our last meeting, council unanimously in our discussion, not a vote or anything, approved donating this truck to the Long Creek Volunteer Fire Department, which was a great gesture. We always need to help our outstretched, out in the community areas. This has been on the social media, and people are very thankful of that. It's been in the paper, and we've got a lot of great feedback from the community, and I'd like to commend the board on your gesture to give that to the Long Creek Volunteer Fire Department. And thank you all so much for that. Great thing to do.
Mayor. I'd like a point of order on that. We never did take a vote of that on the February meeting. Mr. Hurst was to research whether or not we could give that to them. I didn't know. The C Administrator said the CLB had appropriated. I didn't know where it was going. And, but the matter was never brought back to the board for approval. I only bring that up just as a point of order because it wasn't voted on by us. I don't have any problem with giving it to them, but I do think that it should have been done in a more orderly manner. In the manner that we'd stayed, we were going to do it anyway.
Terry.
Mayor, you made a good point, Alderman Gribble. I did inform the city administrator that in my opinion it was a valid position for the city to take in donating the fire truck. And it was their thoughts that the city had approved it. But you're right, the city did not formally vote to do it.
Right.
And I think that if you, I think that would be an appropriate thing to do if the council was so of a mind to make a motion and vote to do that.
And of course, when we left here, all members had indicated.
I wasn't here, so.
Sir.
I said I wasn't here when you all did that, but.
Well, members present.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we can do a formal vote to get it on record. Do we have a motion to approve the action?
I'm making a motion, Mayor.
I'll see.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you.
The people in the community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Like I said, heard a lot of good, positive comments from people trying to reach out and help people. And there's a lot of people in that community. Thank the also, and thank the city people for doing that. Appreciate you, Mr. Reagan, working with them to see who needed to work. Thank you.
Next item of business is communications from city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. On the fire truck, if that was something we should have done, I apologize. Forward to that. I had had many discussions with most of the board individually, and everybody was in favor of that. And we did one thing, we went back and looked at the minutes, the recording of the February meeting to see how that played out. A stipulation that Mr. Gribble said he wanted on that was that if that fire truck, if whichever volunteer fire department ended up with that fire truck, that it be transferred to another volunteer fire department. And we did put that stipulation into that agreement where we donate the truck. So we did, that was his suggestion, and it was a good suggestion, and we did put that in there. So just for the record. One thing we need to do at the June council meeting, we're going to have to move it. The second Tuesday in June, we will be at the TML conference in Gallenburg. So we need to move that forward or backward or whatever's y'all's pleasure.
I have no significant reason to either move it forward or backward. It's on a convenient date, Mr. Policeman here. I'll be out of school finally, but.
Would Thursday, the 16th work?
What's the dates on that, James?
Thursday, the following Thursday would be the 16th.
The dates are T and L, or it's what?
Eleven through fourteen.
Yeah, that's the month I usually have to get somebody to cover for me anyway.
Did you say that would work for you?
I'm good.
Okay, is everybody else good with the 16th?
Yeah.
June 16th.
June the 16th.
Okay.
Is that going to be at 5:00, 5:30, or 5:45?
Be 5:30.
It's up to you.
Will we have a public hearing?
Uh, yes.
So a public hearing will be at 5:30, then the council meeting regular time, 5:45.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Also, we have added, there were some questions during the budget workshop that you all had. We did put a packet into your book that answered all those questions. So I hope if you have other questions, we'd be glad to answer them. But we did put a packet in there to answer all the questions that came up at the budget workshop.
Where is that in the book? Did you say those?
Yes.
Anywhere to answer them?
It's probably in front, in the sleeve, I'm not sure.
But it's all in the front of the book. It's in the front packet of the book.
City Administrator correspond?
No, right here in.
The entry information in the five-year plan that was requested.
It's in your sleeve, right here.
Well, Adam, was that five-year plan approved? Or who did the five-year plan?
Well, the five-year plan was done by us, and it was discussed last year during the budget process. Okay, another issue Mr. Gribble asked about at the last meeting was the barrier barricades, the concrete barricades down along the railroad track that serve as a retaining wall for the gravel.
Right.
Mr. Hicks called the railroad, and they said that they are aware of it, and it is on their maintenance schedule, that they are. But they didn't give us a timeline on when they would be addressing it, but they said it was on their maintenance schedule to be addressed.
Okay, it's a real, it's a real danger. The rocks are coming out. Cars are hitting. It's hitting cars.
Yeah, well, we called them after you mentioned it the last meeting. We called the railroad and talked to them, and they said it is on their maintenance schedule, but they couldn't give us a timeline on it.
Okay.
That's all I got, Mayor.
It is?
Yep.
There's nothing for item six, move to item seven, a report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance.
Commissioner Chris Mann, we have a report. And Trace says his, he's sorry he couldn't be here. He can't walk today. But wanting to report on some of the things that we have been doing. We do meet monthly. We have been meeting monthly since we, the Tanner Preservation Alliance was created in October 2012. We've probably only missed four or five months during that time. But currently, we are planning a kickstands up for preservation motorcycle fundraiser on June the 25th. We're planning a charade planning session on June the 28th at the Seventh Day Adventist Church at four, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're in the process of rewriting and submitting a grant proposal to the Wright Family Foundation. We're currently researching several grant opportunities, one of which is the Rosenwald Fund designed, it's a trust fund designed for East Tennessee. And we have submitted a grant request through the, with the assistance of East Tennessee Development District. I can't remember, can't recall what that grant's called. We have developed, we're about ready to launch a capital fundraising sponsorship program for the individual rooms in the Tanner building. And we're getting ready to launch a online gifting opportunity account through the Plum Fund. Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, May the 12th. This Thursday, May the 12th, 5:30 at Smoky Mountain Home Health and Hospice. And we invite anybody who wishes to attend to be there.
What was that date again? It's 5:30 p.m.?
Thursday, May the 12th.
May the 12th, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Okay, there's nothing under old business, move to item nine under new business, the consideration of opting out of the lease agreement for the animal shelter.
Okay, Mayor. We, of course, as you all know, all except Mr. Fancher, who was not here, we had an extensive discussion on this issue at the budget workshop. And the first thing for the large group that is here, some misinformation that's gotten out there, and that we have continually tried to suppress, is that in no way, form, or fashion are we trying to close the animal shelters. That is not at all what we're trying to do. What we are looking at doing and considering doing is making a transition of the operation and control of the shelter over to the Friends slash Humane Society with no loss of funding, no loss of resources, nothing. And so we're not, you know, everybody's got it in their mind through misunderstandings or being misinformed that our goal is to close the animal shelter. And that is not our goal. What we are looking at is trying to find a happy place where the city and the city taxpayers get the service that they need and can afford, and where the friends and the supporters of the shelter can operate the shelter in a way that they want to operate it, have complete control of it, do whatever they want to with it, and everybody's happy. We have looked at surrounding counties and how they do their animal shelters. And we are the only government-run shelter we can find. And everybody we've talked to that has made this transition, even though they were apprehensive and scared of the future and what might happen, have found that they like it much better because they have complete control, that you can do whatever you want with it. It's no longer bound to what the city's rules say. It's no longer bound to what you can use taxpayer money for or not. You can do whatever you want. And the city will provide animal control. The city will give you a donation or a grant. Technically, anytime that government gives you money, it's a grant, is the technical aspect of it. And with the money that the county puts in, with the monies that's raised through Faye and Uter, or adoptions, or donations, or whatever, the funding stays exactly the same. None of the money goes away. The only thing that changes is the city is not running the shelter. And if there is a cost or a revenue shortage like there is this year, and this is how this come up, was the money that has been generated by the rolling rescue generally runs in the $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 range. And that money is budgeted through the city and spent through the city. Okay, if that money does not come in, like it has not this year, then the taxpayers have to eat that loss. And right now, that loss is looking like $71,000. And it's our understanding that money is being withheld. It's not that they don't have it, they choose not to give it to us. And so if their position is that we can do, you know, that they can do what they want and get the money, and we, the taxpayers, have to fund it, then I got, I have a fundamental problem with that because in talks with our auditors.
Not yet.
You cannot use taxpayer money for these kinds of things. Animal rescue has to be self-funded. And when we started the rolling rescue program, that was the understanding. And the assurances that we got was that it would always pay for itself because we told them from the start, taxpayer money cannot be used for this. And you can't ask the taxpayers when you're doing all these things that are running up the expenses, you can't ask the taxpayers to come in and fund that. We've looked at some other shelters. Most of them's budgets in a $150,000 to $200,000 range. Now, we've not checked with all of them, we've looked at a couple. Our budget went from $358,000 in the current year to this coming year, you're looking at $420,000. That's getting in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars to run the animal shelter. And that is not sustainable by the taxpayers. And so what we have talked about is what are options we can look at? And I think, you know, other places have done this, and so what are we saying? Are we saying that every county around, it has the ability and the capable, the people, the resources, the mindset, the dedication to do this, and it works fine everywhere else? But Lord, we can't do it here? We don't have the ability, we don't have, we don't have the ability to do that here. Well, I'm going to tell you, I don't buy that. I put our people up against anybody. Look at this room right now. Look at the dedicated people that are in here wanting to support the animal shelter. We support it. We want to continue supporting it. We're just trying to find a solution that works for everybody, and it is part of the taxpayers. That's all we're trying to do. We are absolutely not trying to hurt the shelter in any way. We're not trying to close the shelter. We don't want the shelter to close. And if they vote tonight to want to go forward to this transition, and that's what it is, it's not, it's not, oh, man, we're opting out of the lease, let's tear it up and throw it down and walk off. That's not what it is at all. This is a transition to work, and we'll do whatever we can to work with you to get you to a point where everything's working fine. We're not cutting one dime out of the budget to try to hurt the shelter in any way. But the only way this is going to work is to do what everybody else has done around us. And that's to transition over and let the Humane Society, the Friends, operate the shelter, and us provide animal control like the county does, give a donation like the county does. It'll keep the funding at its current level, doesn't take a thing away. The taxpayers don't have to eat these losses. If they so choose to spend and do whatever they want to do to run the costs up, the taxpayers don't have to foot the bill. And that's all we're trying to do. And to me, everybody that I've explained this to has said, well, they don't, it looks like that they'd love this deal because now they can run it however they want, they can have complete control. There's no arguments, there's no disagreements. And there's constant disagreements because we have to look at it from an animal control standpoint, and the Humane Society wants to look at it from a rescue standpoint. And there's nothing wrong with that. I support that with all my heart. All my animals come from the animal shelter, and probably always will. And I couldn't work there. I could not. And have to put those animals down, I couldn't do it. I don't have a hard point, buddy. I don't. But it's a necessary evil. And wanting to keep the animals and keep building like we're doing, keep adding more buildings, keeping more animals longer, giving them more extensive medical treatment, that costs money. And somebody's got to come up with that money. And the question is, and the question that was posed to these gentlemen at the workshop was, do you want to continue coming up with this money and putting the burden on the taxpayer? Or do you want to look at doing what everybody around us has done and likes and will work for everybody? And that's, and they agreed to put it on the agenda tonight and talk about it tonight. And then it turned into, well, we're trying to close the shelter. And that's not it at all. That has never been an option, that's never been considered in no way, form, or fashion.
Is this going all right?
Robert, you're out of order. I'll let you talk before there's.
Oh, that's fine, I'm good.
But one concern and several meetings that I've had at phone calls, and whether it's valid, I don't know. But there's a lot of people contacting me that's concerned that a lot of the animals that are in the animal shelter are being earmarked to go out before our local people gets an opportunity to pick from what they've got. Because there's people, you know, that, this is just conversations that I've had. And if anything ought to happen, our local people, if this is not happening, if our local people should get the first pick of the group before they're shipped off. That's a concern that a lot of people has made to me. Okay, James, sir.
That's all I got. I just wanted the folks here because I know this is something people feel strongly about. They feel passionate about. And I just wanted to make sure it was very clear to everybody. I just wanted to take that time, and yeah, I could talk for an hour. But that's it in a nutshell of what we're looking, and what we're wanting to talk.
And let me make this statement before we get started into this. Citizens' comments will be at the end. I've told Robert I'm going to let him speak before council actually votes on this. But this meeting is going to be kept in order. We're not going to get out of order, okay? Robert, you have the floor.
By and large, what James Fincham has told you is untrue. Now, I can get you information, we already have some, for surrounding areas, support their shelter in a number of different ways, not dissimilar from what you're doing. So what he's saying is disingenuous. Now, we built the shelter, own it. We have this 25-year lease. Obviously, the lease means something, it's written in English. On the advice of my attorney, I provided everybody in the council a copy of it so nobody can say they didn't understand it. It's been operated for 20 years, for God's sakes. And all of a sudden, James Fincham wants to do it a different way. It will restore the animal shelter. We're not set up to do what he's saying, and most of his golly gook, it doesn't make any sense to us anyway. What we're going to ask him is, you continue. We're not wasting taxpayers' money. The rolling rescue, now, I called Fincham twice, no return calls, to talk to him about a roof and some mold problems. You see, they sent $22,000, $27,000, you know, and we'll continue to do that. We've got to fix that roof and take care of the mold problem. I don't care, I wouldn't care if the city took over and did it by getting no callbacks from this Fincham. So I have to do it. I'm willing to do it, and I'm capable. Rolling rescue generates some funds. We're willing to give those funds to the city with the animal shelter in their totality, except for the travel expenses and the transport expenses. The gas and tires maybe a couple times a year, no big deal. When this all came about, Fincham resisted that. Then he says to me, the council won't allow that to happen. Can you do it? I said, that's crap. I've been dealing with council all my life, give me their names and numbers. I talked to them, I put it in writing. They came back to Fincham and said, you know, Mr. Brandon is exactly right. You shouldn't be grabbing this money. And so that's what seems all that. We don't really want the money for anything other than occasionally we have to pay our expenses. The gas, I bought the two vehicles from $70,000. I put it out of my own pocket. Fine, but you know, gas expense, about $300 a trip, what it amounts to, gas station or motel, that should come out of the funds that we're originating from that endeavor. And there, in a sense, it was roughly $100 a dog. We send some animals to Cleveland, we don't get anything for them because those are the animals that we would have to kill if we didn't send them to Cleveland. They take them. We pay all the expenses for them. We, you know, we pay for it, that's, it's because we love the animals, it doesn't hurt anybody. It's not any more expensive than killing them. Now, if you decide, now, I can, I will in the next month get you analysis of surrounding areas, what they do with their animal shelters in detail. I'll submit to the council and everybody, so you'll know what everybody else is doing. It's not like, oh, well, this is unique to anybody else, not true. We will share that with you in specificity, in detail, with people you can contact and verify. So you'll know exactly what other areas are doing. We've already made some inroads in that, we're finding that out already. I'm going to give it to you in writing, phone numbers, and who you can verify with, so you'll know that you're not unique, as Fincham has believed. Now, this lease that's in effect, I made sure you all had copies of this lease so nobody can say, oh, I didn't know what was in it. On the vice of council, I made sure that everybody has a copy of the lease so you know what's in it, read the English language. If you, and I've asked people, why is this happening? I don't get it. Been going this way for 20 years. And I'll tell you what the answer I get is. Fincham doesn't like you. Fincham doesn't like the animal shelter. I said, what's they got to do with anything? I don't think I like him either. That's, you know, y'all hired the guy, he fulfilled your contract. He's $77,000 a year, you must like him.
That's good, that's good.
Okay. Now, going forward, I will tell you, if you violate this lease, if you do what he wants to leave you and to do it, we are going to court. I'm going to ask for a million dollars punitive damages. We're going to seek all legal fees. I'm going to name James Fincham as an individual in this, bringing this about. You shouldn't do this. The lease is valid, the lease makes sense. The Friends of the Animal Shelter are not set up so that they can run, pay their employees, and do all the things the city does. You need to be doing that. You need not stop doing it. You do it, your whole community is diserved. You know, Gandhi said, a community can be judged by the way it treats its animals. So that's so true. We do this because we love these animals. We have no other ulterior motive. Anybody that knows us will know that. And this is what we do, and we'll continue to keep doing it. We're not going to stand by and let this, what I call half-baked idea get slipped by y'all and ruin the animal shelter. Not going to do it. We'll file suit, I've got an attorney lined up, ready to go. Don't want to do that. We shouldn't have to do it. We should operate just like we are, of course, going to hold it in place anyway. But appreciate what we're doing for the city and the animals. It's a valuable service, we love doing it. All of us do this because we care. This year's I've given $100,000 to the shelter because we care for these animals. And we do love our community. For me, it's an animal person, a lot of people, it's a community person, which is fine. It's fine. But if we want to continue to do this, we will give the shelter all the money that comes from rolling rescue, except for the travel expenses. We, I want to give a report to all the aldermen periodically, exactly what's going on with the shelter now and Fincham. We do need a new roof, we've got to get on the shelter. We've got a mold problem. We can deal, I can deal with that. But it's got to be done. I called Fincham twice, I get no phone calls back. Fine, but I've got to take care of these things, they can't just be left sitting. And I will do that. So I'm going to give a support for the animal shelter and the animals. And appreciate what we're doing, why we're doing it. We're not anybody's enemy. We do it out of love, out of heart for these animals. And we'll continue to do it. I don't want to, I'm good at lawsuits, by the way, but I don't want to evolve into a lawsuit. I think we'll win. We shouldn't have to do that. That's not what anybody should want. It should be avoided, and that's what I'm telling you. I take any questions you have.
Mr. Brandon, I want, first off, I really appreciate what you do.
Mr. Brandon, I want, first off, I really appreciate what you do. You give your whole heart to the animal shelter. But one of the things that people's concerned is about what the county pays compared to what the city pays. There's a whole lot of difference when two-thirds of the animals come from the county appropriately. Now, I mean, you know, there's a whole lot of difference in what the county gives and what the city, the city giving about four times the amount. I just like, people got a problem with that.
When I first came here, county was giving about $1.79 a dog. And I raised such hell with them, we got them up to where they are now. But I agree with you. They need, it needs more proportion to what we're doing for the, for the animals of our county and city. I will work with y'all in any way. I'll badger the CLB and stay after them to try to get their things up. Because it was less than $2 an animal when I first got involved in this. It is not equitable now. I think the county, hard to understand the CLB. I can sort of understand you fellows, sort of. But the CLB is very difficult. But we need to, from a public relations standpoint, fuss at the issue of county to do more for the animal shelter. And I will do that. I'll take, take direct charge of that and run ads about it. I'll do everything I can to get their participation up. And I agree with you.
Could ask you another question too?
Leave it all you want.
Oh, just one of the things, this year, we got, what, another month left and, and so far, rolling rescue has given $27,000, where they were giving about $70,000 or $80,000, if I'm, is that?
$100.
They're giving $100,000 and now we've got 27. And people want the city to come up with the rest of it. I mean-
That's not quite the case.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry, I need to, I do want to answer one question right here. You asked why now?
Let, let Tina answer the question.
There was a question. Why now? The question is, there's a $71,000 shortfall in the revenue that was generated last year versus what's generating this year. The outgoing records from the shelter show right under $90,000 being taken in or generated for these animals going out on rolling rescue. And that's of the end of April. Those dogs that you mentioned that were sent out at no charge because they weren't adoptable did get adopted by somebody. But had you, had they been adopted out locally, that'd have been $80 because local people have to pay.
They would pay them.
Local people have to pay, that would have been $80 more. There is still a cost for taking care of those animals. And that has to be covered. That's the difference. You can't-
Robert, let Tina finish.
Thank you.
You're all right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. There's-
And while you're talking, talk about you doing the survey, about showing up and shit.
Yeah, I am the one that called around the surrounding areas. And I couldn't find a city or a county that didn't have a contract with a humane society or some other organization. They don't run it directly anymore. It's not run as a department of the city in any of the places that I've been able to find. And it works much better. The place in particular that I thought was the best was Greenville. They were very tickled. Both groups worked side by side. The, the city and the county took in no revenue whatsoever. They had no interest and we don't either. Every dime that comes in goes to the shelter under their program. And that's what we want to replicate, everything. We take nothing. And then in addition, we give $60,000, okay? That gets your revenue, if you count the revenue you're already getting from the rolling rescue program, plus the donations, plus the regular revenue and other donations, it's the exact same dollars. City wants no revenue from it. But we cannot have a shortfall where the city's having this program. When I came on, there were a lot of audit findings. And that was one that was specified quite clearly. You cannot support an outside organization like this. Not, this is not a city function. It's a friends' function. It's a great function, but we can't directly support it like that. We can give you a donation. We can give you donations all day long. But we can't lend our credit. And the most common way to lend your credit is to pay the bills directly, and we can't do it. That was an audit finding. It was brought up. The city had to stop. There were two places it was happening, and they both got stopped. You cannot have it continue. This rec, I mean, like I said, the money was never turned over. There's records right now of $89,000 for this year as of the end of April. And the city only received 27. That's a $71,000 shortfall if you calculate out to the end of June. The city cannot cover that with public funds. If the shelter is gonna keep it, you know, this is a good option, a good way to make everything work.
And that was, and that was what we got into at the budget workshop. We didn't come in and say-
Did you have something?
Say, let's, oh, let's do, you know, we talked about, here's the situation we're in. What do you all think? And there were, and we talked about that, and this option come up. We did not come in here to the workshop saying, this is what we want to do. I mean, you can play it that way, that this is, oh, this is something we just decided, oh, we started and drove to do. This come up during, during the conversation we had at the budget workshop. When we were talking about the shortfall in the money and how did they, how did these gentlemen want to handle it? That's when that come out. They, I mean, they could have easily been said, well, we're just gonna eat it, let the taxpayers eat it and move on. But that, that was not the discussion. That was not what everybody wanted to do.
Well, to understand it, whenever this thing started, the, the rolling rescue, Carol Hood sent you that?
Carol Hood, I was on the animal control board when the rolling rescue started. And Carol Hood assured, at back, at that time, which was in the mid-nineties, Carol Hood assured everybody that there would be no public funds ever spent on the rolling rescue. Because we had an extensive discussion about that. And you and I have explained, discussed this many times.
I disagree with what you're saying.
Well, that, certainly, that's, you know, that's your prerogative. And she assured us, the board, that there'd be no city employees involved, there'd be no city funds involved because we told her then, no city funds can be used in it. And she assured us. I made the motion on the animal control board to approve the rolling rescue based on those stipulations, that no city employees, no city funds would go into the rolling rescue program. And that was, and that's how it was approved. And then, when we, when we get into the nuts and bolts of it here in the last few years, what we find is, the city employees are pretty much doing it all, other than the prep work and taking them, the transport. We do all the feeding, the cleaning, we pay for the medical, we pay for everything. We do it all.
When he gets through that, bless all his crap-
Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah, finish up as quick as you can and I'm gonna let them discuss.
Quick is interesting. Now, what he's saying a lot of is disingenuous. Now, I can provide y'all with what's on the surrounding areas do supporting this shelter. And I'll give it to you in writing. You can verify it. Now, the rolling rescue, we only want it to fund the gas expense and the, and the transport expense. I haven't been able to get any cooperation about that. We don't want to keep the money. Everything we do is for the animal shelter. Now, I got this roof I gotta get on, I got a mold thing, so we're holding some money for that. If y'all could tell me that y'all would, well, I don't trust this, but if you tell me that you would do it, we've got about $100,000 right now.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
In rolling rescue?
Yeah. Well, anywhere.
Oh, let me see. The rolling rescue, we have collected $63,836. We've got $15,100 in outstanding invoices waiting to come in, with a projected income of $78,936. We don't know how many are running. We're gonna be running the next month and a half because our coronator is sick. But as it is, we have paid the city. We have given them $27,583.54 so far, plus, and plus we have done $9,408 that we spent to buy 120 dog beds for the dogs this winter because they were sleeping on cold, wet concrete. And the city didn't want to buy beds. We have spent $3,781.84 for veterinary care requested by the Newport Animal Shelter for x-rays and other, other care.
See, we get those calls sometimes, if the vet that can't do it, and it's an emergency. And I generally approve going to an outside vet and we pay for it.
We do a lot for the animal shelters that, that they don't know about, obviously.
Well, for instance, the curtains, all the curtains.
Yeah, the curtains outside.
The curtains, to keep the wind and rain off in the winter. I found those between Hollywood and Dollywood for their horses. It's like that, down in winter where they were making them and got them made for the animal shelters. We never tried, failed to look after our animals. But coming back to this, we want to work with the city. We will be very open, show you everything.
We send letters to everyone every time we do something. You guys all get copies of our letters.
Well, but we will, it is nothing that we won't share with you. And this is about what other areas do. I'm gonna do a study of it and send it to you in writing with verification people that you can talk to if you like. So, so many communities do something with their animal shelters to help them financially and otherwise. And I'll share that with you. It's all, it's kind of a mixed bag. Everybody does it a little different. I understand that. But we want to keep the animal shelter. We're not set up to do what Fincham wants to do. It'll destroy the animal shelter. And our job is not, not let it be destroyed, purely and simply.
I had conversations today with people in Cleveland who, they outsource their kennel, shelter. Mr. Brandon, I, I don't know, it's the first time I've laid eyes on you. I, I respect what Coach Prophet said, because I've been, gone away for a long time. I've heard from a former Newport resident that now lives in Cleveland, that the animal shelter situation down there is chaotic since-
Cleveland, Ohio?
Cleveland, Tennessee. Are we talking about Ohio or Tennessee?
Tennessee, Ohio.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Well, let me, let me divert to Cleveland, Tennessee, which, who has outsourced theirs. Only problem I have with the whole thing, I believe in the letter of the lease, but the numbers don't add up. Coach Prophet said two-thirds. I've heard 80% of the dogs come from the county and 20% from the city. And, but the, the funding's just reversed. And that, that's the thing I'm having a problem with. I, hey, look-
We all have a problem with that.
Yes, sir?
And we're willing to work on that.
Yes, sir.
But it's a problem that's been built in from the very beginning.
Will the county work with us?
And, and what we have to do is, it has to be a thing, shaming, pressuring them, nagging them, and staying after them all the time. I can do that, by the way. And I'm willing to do it.
I concede you. You're pretty good at it.
Robert, we're, we're gonna have to move on.
I'd like to make a point here. I don't think we're ready to vote on whether or not we want to opt out of this lease. I know I'm not ready to vote. I'd like to see the information from, that Mr. Brandon's offered. And I'd like to see this money issue resolved.
Yes.
I'd like to take a look at what y'all's money and like, the money that James has said, that, you know, y'all owe him 71, y'all say you've got 78 in there. But there's a question about, you've got to have a new roof and you've got to have a bowl. And since that lease is to the Newport, I'd say then, we'd have to put the, we'd have to put the roof and the-
Mold.
And fix the mold.
But we can work with you on that.
Well, but, you know, that's what I'm saying. It looks like all we're talking about, we've got two pots of money in there, but everybody agrees on what the two pots are in. I guess where the disagreement's coming in is who's got the thing. And I don't think we should opt out of a program that's been working real well for 20 years because we've got one issue on this money.
You ought to, you're gonna have your choice immediately. Okay, Robert, we got to move on.
Okay, I think we ought to-
But I, I did let you speak.
Can we postpone this action?
Well, that's up to the council. That's up to them.
I think we postpone the voting on this until the next meeting in, on June, somebody hit me, June 16? Whenever the next meeting is. When, June 16? That we postpone any action on this till June 16?
We've got a motion on the floor.
Opportunity to take a look at the month.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor to postpone this to the next meeting. Any discussion?
Our discussion needs to be between us-
Right.
-CLB or Crystal, Mayor Crystal Ottinger and our, it needs to be a tri-meet.
The big issue is, and they admitted, that they're holding the money. Mr. Brandon said, the only thing they're taking out of the rolling rescue money is the cost of the van and the gas, and the rest is coming to us. By their own admission, they are not doing that. They're withholding the money. They're gonna use that money to do other things. Mr. Brandon and I, he made the comment that he called me twice and I didn't call him back. But he don't make the issue of all the times I have called him back and I have talked with him. But he agreed that he personally would fund the repairs to the, the roof and the other issues out there. What they're looking at doing is diverting the rolling rescue money into that.
Robert, Robert, you, you gotta be seated now. I've got to carry on with the meeting.
He also, the mayor also informed us that he had, that you had approached him and offered $30,000 for us to hire an individual. And so, I have, when I've asked, in the meetings I've had with the friends and we've talked about their fundraising efforts, the rolling rescue is the only fundraising they do except for some donations. But what they have told me in meetings that Tina and I've had way back when we got into this whole issue. And so, if they're spending all this money that they're talking about out of the rolling rescue, they're spending money that's supposed to be coming to us to begin with.
Well, they haven't spent it. They're holding it because we haven't fixed it.
But we're spending. We've spent it. We've already spent it. Because it's to operate the shelter. It's to pay the bills. It's not some money that's being held and not being spent. We have spent it. The city in Newport pays the bills every month. And the bills have been paid.
The meeting's called order.
It's not a pile of money that's laying somewhere that's not being spent. We've spent it.
Well, if, if there's money, if the roof needs repairing, the mold needs to be taken care of, that's a responsibility of who?
That's a separate issue.
The city?
That is a separate issue.
Well, it's, that may be-
I have called for the discussion to cease. We've got a motion and a second, and we're not gonna argue about this. You know, we're gonna be decent and in order. Tina, call the row.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
No.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Go, let's go over exactly what-
Postpone this.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Alderman Bobby Knight?
I want some motion.
Alderman Gribble made a motion to postpone this.
No. Still needs money. No.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
No. There'd have to be a lot of change on this before I could go along with what's going on. It's just way out of whack right now for me. And I really appreciate what Mr. Brandon does, I tell you.
I do, too. I mean, it's, he puts a lot into it. Okay, uh-
Let's do it.
We have another-
Let's do it.
Do we have another motion concerning item A? To opt out of the lease?
Guys, don't do this. Fix the mess up a good program here. I'm asking, let's give, you know, give it a chance. My goodness, it worked for 20 years.
You opt out of the lease, you'd have lost your business.
I mean, it's gonna be a, we're gonna run a good animal shelter program. On this thing here, if we are, nope, we're not having to pay more and more. Mike, that's, that's not clear. That's what James has said, it's not what these women are saying, and it's not what Robert's saying.
It's what your son makes a record.
Some worse, somebody, or what Tina's saying. Somebody's confused about what, about the money we're talking about.
Well, when it comes to the money, I don't think Tina's confused with the money.
Well, somebody is.
That is my word.
Somebody is. Somebody's confused.
Well, I got full confidence in Tina and her financial ability to know what the numbers are.
I do that, too. But there, Mayor, you've got to see, the numbers here aren't going. They aren't matching. Have, is the city gonna fix what's wrong out there? James says no, we're, we're not. And they're saying they're holding the money to fix it.
But it's operating ones that they're holding that we've already spent.
Yes, it is. They were supposed to be spent. Those monies, as he said, are operations. They have already been spent and have to be reimbursed.
Over $70,000, we're gonna get in to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on something. And we're, I mean, we've got, we've got the money to do this. Why make an issue out of it?
This is not gonna be an argument, okay?
I'm still making, I'm still doing my discussion when I have the floor.
Mr. Brandon, you all issue, supposed to issue funds quarterly, semiannually?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
We can share, we can make the recommendation, the numbers, percent. Get to the roof and get the mole and show you exactly what we offer. Now, and now we're gonna have.
Well, letters of agreement, you should turn that money over and let us fix the roof.
Okay, I've got a deal on the roof, $90,000, you want it all over there?
You say, huh? $99,000?
No, $99,000.
$99,000?
It's more and more all the time. $9,000. What does the bottom fix?
To fix the roof.
No, I mean, I'm fixing what we're given. I mean, that's what's.
For this calendar year, for this fiscal year, our budget was supposed to be $147,000. With the way it's running, because there have been no more funds turned over, it's going to be $218,000.
That's if the Roland Rescue money is held.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Pardon?
If the Roland Rescue money is held?
Yes, correct.
Okay. But if you fix the roof for $9,000, they release the $78,000, pardon?
That has nothing, this budget has nothing, the current budget has nothing to do with the roof.
We're turning out a whole system over $9,000 fix on the roof and then turning in the money timers. Because it's worked, we've not had a.
They're doing certain things.
It's worked excellent.
I don't have a vote on this matter, but I do represent the city of Newport and the city of Newport's taxpayers. And I've been on city council for over 20 years, and it's always been a problem. The city, you know, we just had a big property increase.
Amen.
And here, we're gonna, we're going to try to spend some of that money that's not $77,000 in there, are we gonna spend the city's taxpayer? I'm, I'm, I'm a county person, too. But there comes a time when everybody has to be a part of the program and do their fair share, and it's never been their fair share. It's always been the city's foot in the bill.
So we're gonna mess up our program because the county won't do what they're supposed to do. We can, we've been with the county over and over again. We were with them on this, uh, business we're putting in. Did they agree? No. We went ahead with the business. And I think that's what we should do here.
Roger, you're a smart man. If 80% of the burden was on you.
I agree that.
That's what we need. We kind of formation 15 minutes ago that we need, we need to, what is the word you, uh?
Pressure.
Pressure. We, I'm not saying anything like that. I'm, I'm, I'm for it.
James, question.
Tina, that you can use the money for, and that's what is also part of our responsibility and keep you out of trouble, us out of trouble, is what you can spend your money for and what you can't.
And this was an audit finding in prior years. The city cannot do it. It had to stop.
It has nothing to do with $9,000. It has to do with $70,000. And it has nothing to do directly with what the county puts in. It has to do with what the Roland Rescue generates and costs and putting that money back in. Now, yeah, you can ask the county to absorb part of that. If we're gonna have to absorb it all, and certainly they should have to, but they don't have to because nothing is in their name. All the bills are in the city of Newport's name. And if they go out and spend all the money they want and then we gotta pay the bill, it's us. It's nobody else. It's not the county. It's not them. It's us.
We've done had a vote. So now it's, it's all council now, no, no comments. So what's your pleasure, council, on this issue? Do we have anything that you want to do about opting out of the lease?
And again, just to clarify, Mayor, it's not to just drop it, drop it on the floor and say have that. It's to take time and as much time within reason, not years, but take time to do a transition and help every way we can. And, I mean, it's, you know, it's not like we're just trying to walk away and trying to ruin something that's perfect. It's not perfect by any means. And, but this is a way to try to get it to where everybody can get what they want, including the friends. But to be able for them to sit back and dictate what they want to do and what we're gonna do and us just continue to pay for it, pay for it, pay for it, I just think it's part of the taxpayers.
It's council.
We've done a lot of things that have been part of the taxpayers.
Counsel. Not, not right now, Robert. Counsel. What's your pleasure?
I think ultimately we answer to the taxpayers.
Amen.
Right here they say it.
Do we have a motion to opt out of the contract?
I'll make the motion when we opt out of the contract.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd have a second because I don't like the way it is here.
Okay. We got a second to the motion. Any discussion?
I don't like the numbers I see here, but also that's a contract, dated 1996. I wasn't in Newport, Tennessee then, but it's black and white.
Any other discussion? Row call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
No.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Three to two. Okay, item B.
Now, what we, just to make an update, we told Miss Fontaine, when we talked to her, that we'll be glad to come to the animal meeting, the friends meeting Thursday and start working with them to try to help them make the transition.
Question's over, Mayor. Let's move on.
Okay, item B. That's what they voted, three to two.
Yeah, we're all just in the week. Good day to you.
Consideration?
Thank you for your time, Brandon. You're welcome. Thank you. Glad you're okay. Come back anytime. You're always welcome. Thanks.
Okay, item B, consideration, a first reading of ordinance 2016-03, city of Newport budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Okay, Mayor, this is, of course, this is the first reading on the budget for next year. If passed tonight, we would have, at the next meeting, we would have a public hearing and a second reading of the budget. We, we had extensive discussions about it at the workshop. Be glad to answer any questions or anything anybody has.
Anybody got any questions on the first reading?
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2016-03, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion to approve on the first reading.
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no?
No. I'd like to ask for roll call.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of first reading of ordinance 2016-04, budget amendment for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Okay, Mayor, this, of course, again, this will require a first reading tonight, a public hearing, and a second reading at the, the June meeting. Uh, this is the last opportunity for this fiscal year to do some, just some cleanup in the budget to move money around and make sure everything gets covered so that we're good at the end of the year.
Mayor, the caption of that is ordinance number 2016-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016.
Okay, you said 2016-04?
2015-2016.
I'm on the wrong one, I'm sorry.
It is 04.
Yeah, okay, all right. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment on the first reading?
I make a motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Could we have a roll call, Major?
Sure.
Okay.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Item D is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2016-05, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School for the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Ms. Birchey was here, but Mayor, that is.
She was. She told me she had to go.
Okay, good. That's ordinance number 2016-05, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016 for Newport Grammar School.
Excuse me. Do we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is discussion of auditors.
Mayor, we stated last year that we would put the auditors, audit of the city of Newport out for bid, and I make a motion that we do so. We've had this auditor over and over, and any organization will tell you that you need to change at least every three to five years the auditor.
I believe if it's not broken, don't fix it. If it's done good, everything's working, they know our system, they know our plan. They've been doing it for years. They bring up stuff that's not, you know, right, they let you know.
They've been pretty hard on us.
Well, but they've, you don't know, well, the only question that was asked last time, did they check cash in the audit? The answer was no.
Yes, they did. They did a cash count.
Well, I asked the guy, Tina, if you tech check cash intake into the office, and he said no. I mean, you can go back and look at the film.
They do preliminaries.
I've got it written.
We got a motion. We have a second.
Motion was to.
Put the audit out for bid this year.
We have a second. Call for a second.
Any, I'm gonna say, do what you say you would.
The motion died for lack of a second.
Who are you talking to, me?
I'm talking to everybody.
What'd you say?
I said, you didn't do what you said you'd do, that you'd put it out for bid this year. That's what we all agreed like. We sat right here and talked about it. And we agreed, next year we'll put this out for bid.
That's what was said, but I don't remember.
Well, okay, that's, I just, that's all I said, Mike.
Item F, moving on. Item F, discussion of city Newport logo, Alderman Mike Hansel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
There's something else to decide about. I provided you with some copies, y'all, when we're going over together. Basically, I think it's about time we change the city seal for the city of Newport. So basically, I think it's time for a change. Throughout the course of history, businesses and different things change their logos to suit changing times, changing needs. I think that's something that we need to consider also. With the possibility of the distillery taken off, I think that's one that brings some new materials prosperity in Newport. And I think we need a rebranding of what we do. And firely or unfirely, I think we're judged on. If you would, look at the, a little bit of attention to detail on the Gatlinburg and Newport sample. Those are very similar, and I think years ago Newport just sort of co-opted the Gatlinburg emblem. Don't look like they've even changed the font a whole lot. And I guess imitation's the most sincere form of flattery, especially if you're the one being flattered. But it sort of has a clip art or a cartoonish look to it. I think it's going to be a little more dynamic, a little more 3D, if you would. I think it just shows a lack of original thought from years ago, and I think we need to do something to totally rebrands the city of Newport.
When you talked about that, did you get any information on what the cost incurred to be to switch over?
Uh, no, sir, I haven't, but I would think it would be very minimal. Tina could probably tell us more, but I would imagine the metal sign out front would probably be the most expensive thing in the place.
And of course, the two entrance signs are already in progress.
Yeah, and I spoke with.
They're already made, I think.
There's no connection.
Okay.
I think, you could tell by looking at those, they've been tweaked, and I think some people tweaked it here locally for us, too, but I think we need to do something totally original. And I'm not looking for an arbitrary decision. I also put you a copy of some different ones on. I don't want you to just make a decision based off those three. If you want to submit some plans, I'd be glad to look at them. If you feel like this is something we might need to take to a committee or something, I'd be willing to take the bull with the horns on that and be involved in the process.
You on the form of committee to?
If, if that's the desire of council, I said, I don't want this coming in and I say, we absolutely need to change it, but it's just something to consider.
Any council members want to serve on the committee to look at that? Jeff? If I have any, want to serve on that committee to?
Uh, Mayor, if I could, I would suggest maybe Gary say it on.
Okay.
Sure.
Appointed by acclamation.
I do him that way a lot. He appreciates it. He always thanks me later.
Gary, where you at?
Yeah, man.
Gary, Mike.
He always thanks me later.
We'll call that the committee to research this and continue to update and if anybody of them has any.
Just for clarity purposes, but I need to make that in form of a motion and get a vote.
I can just appoint you as committee.
Yeah, Mayor, of course.
You got the committee, it's a good idea, Mike.
You ought to be a part of the community.
Yes.
Chairman, like him.
Okay, yeah, item G is consideration of police department added a new policy to the general orders body worn cameras policy.
Mayor, if I could, that, like anything that is changed in our general orders, that has to be brought before council and approved. Deputy Chief Hudson and I, along with our administrative training officer, looked through several different cities' policies, came together with what we felt like was a workable policy for us, and the changes of any of them are very minimal, just about when they were downloaded and by whom, and, you know, we just asked that you all consider this policy to be passed so we can start the process. We do have the cameras, they were purchased by the Governor's Highway Safety Office at that time, which is now the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. They were bought with a grant from the Governor's Highway Safety Office. So, they are in-house, but we can't issue them without policy and training.
Do we have a motion to...
Don't move.
...to Chief's request? Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
So, yes, Mike. They're gonna say yes. It's thunder.
Mayor Ball, you have that motion.
Roger.
Roger.
You made the motion, didn't you, Roger?
Yes, I made the motion.
Yes.
You need to reread it?
No.
You got it?
We just...
Okay, moving on to item ten, got bids. Item E is consideration of bid of utility vehicle for the Parks and Recreation.
Don't move.
Mr. Drucker, you said everything's in order on that, is that correct?
Low bid, right?
Yes, that would be the...
Tri County, RTV 500 at $8,709. The other bid came in at $9,092, so the Tri County would be the cheaper one.
Is this in the budget?
It is.
We got a motion. Roger, Roger, you made the motion, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
I second.
Okay, we got a second, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of bids of gym equipment for the community center.
Yeah, there were three bids that came in on this, two of them came from the same company, Fitworks. They had an Intenza brand treadmill and elliptical, and then a True brand treadmill and elliptical, and then we also got from Direct Fitness Solution a Precor. On this, after Tim has researched, he would like to accept the treadmill by Fitworks, it is the cheaper option, and at $9,300, and it does have a three-year warranty as compared to the Precor that only had a one-year warranty on its treadmill. On the elliptical, he wants to rebid it out because it also has a little board that raises up, and that special feature is only offered on Precor, and it costs $1,400 extra, so we want to rebid, or that's not specified.
Okay, yes. So, we're going to vote tonight to fund the treadmill only?
Yes, correct, and then we'll rebid the elliptical, and it would have to be on the next meeting.
I make a motion to accept the treadmill from Fitworks, the True treadmill, I guess that's a True...
Yes.
...brand, logo. I make that motion.
Second. Yes, motion and second. Any other discussion?
This is in the budget, correct?
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Citizens' comments, Jimmy Clark has requested.
City Mayor, all City Aldermen, City Administrator, and City Attorney. What we got here is this Tennessee chip. Now, started on this in Nashville in March this year, so I've been with it since March 24th. But, Robert, you've been in the middle of Tennessee, west Tennessee, and east Tennessee, you know more about what Tennessee chip is, I mean, I've read it all over, but it's been in more places, and got a couple of people that, so it's likely him to fix it.
Okay.
You guys all got a copy of it?
Yes. Yes.
First off, gentlemen, let me understand that you understand, I'm not accustomed to standing in front of a bunch of august men and making this a talk. But let me go back just a little bit to, well, let me go to the acronym of CHIP to start with. It's the Childhood Identification Program. And what it does, it identifies children that have been, it's an identification program for children that have been abducted. This program actually started under President Ronald Reagan, when he established the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And out of that came, one of the programs that came out of that was the Amber Alert, which we're all familiar with. And also, this CHIP program was established, but it proved to be logistically and monetarily difficult for them to handle. So, they came to the Grand Masters of Masons Conference and proposed to them that they, that the Masons of the United States take over this program and run it through their local lodges, their grand lodge, and that's what happened. Now, what has happened, we started off in 2014 with little paper identification packets. They took a fingerprints, the ink, hair samples for DNA, finger clippings, this swab, this different thing, that kind of thing, and we're sent home with the parents. But now we have grown to the point, and we did about approximately 30,000 of those, but now we have grown to the point that it's just no longer feasible, and there's so much demand for it, that we have gone to a computerized system. We take, still take the DNA sample, we take digital photos, we take a digital fingerprint, so there's no ink involved, we take a digital voice imprint by asking specific questions of a child so that you get a full range of their voice. And what I understand, if a child goes missing, then this digital voice print can be turned over to your local law enforcement, and then to the FBI, and from the FBI to the, what is it, NCIS. And if that child's voice comes across a cell phone, even as a background noise, then that child, then that is flagged as to where that child is, it identifies that voice print. We would like to get this program started here in Cock County. And I would propose, now, let me get just a little bit further. Right now, probably in the United States, there's 133,000 children that are missing. Each year, there's approximately 200,000 go missing, and that's just to non-custodial relatives. And then there's probably another 50,000 that goes missing to strangers. And if you think about 133,000, that's an approximation, of course, children that are We would, like I said, we would like to get this program going here in Tennessee, here in Newport, it's already going in Tennessee. And I would like to see this body, if they would fund one of these machines for Cock County. Now, not that it would always be used in Cock County, it might be needed someplace else or go someplace, but it would always come back to Cock County. Cock County, it's in a hard case, and it would, Cock County would have a plaque on it telling where that machine came from. When they do the printout of all the information on the child, the, it would be printed out on it, Newport City, sponsored by Newport City of Newport, it would be printed out on every, every card, it was printed out with all the information on it. When we do these information things, we do, like, we take height, weight, DNA samples, pictures, and all this is put on a little CD, a little disc, and it's given to the parent. We keep nothing. When we, when, after that is printed out on that CD, and transferred that CD, all the information that's in that computer is wiped. There's no, we don't keep any kind of records. If you go on the internet to EZchildID.com, that's where we get our machine. And you look on there, and you'll find that those machines, the one that we get is $4,999, $5,000. But because the Masons buy so many of them, we are able to get that same machine for $2,886, that we can buy one of these machines. We can set up, and we can do approximately a child every six minutes to identify them. And it's, to me, it's, I was not really aware of a whole lot of it, but it's, this has really grown, really near and dear to me in the last, in the last little bit. I was aware of it, but not to the extent that I am right now. And if you have a question for me, I would be more than glad to try to answer them. If I can't give you the answer, I've got a guy that's, he says that he, on my, not on there now, but he said, call him, and he can give us any kind of answer that we might need.
Does the city and county go together?
I'm going to propose, yes, I'm going to see the county also. I would like to see, you think about it now, one every six minutes. It'd take a long time to go through the children of this county. If we had two machines, we could do one every three minutes. I mean, but it's whatever this, whatever this body decides. But it would be a, it would be a feather in our cap, I think, that if that machine does go to another county someplace, and the people of that county see, oh, Cock, or Newport, Newport's sponsoring this machine, why is our, why does our town not have a machine that's to do these, do these things? We can go to, like, to the fire, set up a tent, birthday parties, Christmas parties, go to the school, if the parents are there, we can go to the school and do these things. But it sounds bad that we can have that many children go missing, and there's so many of them still missing.
If the city bought this, is the Masonic Lodge, are you going?
Yes.
They'll, you'll, I do the operation of the machine?
Yes, absolutely.
Geez, what do you think, are you familiar with the CHIP program? I'm not completely familiar with it, but I will tell you that I have been blessed to have the opportunity to go to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children in Washington, DC, or Alexandria, Virginia. We participate in all their programs, we're alerted on each, each one of these Amber Alerts that comes in. As, the progress in science that we're seeing these days, any kind of these, you have DNA samples, voice prints, anything like that, that's more modern than anything we've ever had in the past. We used to take a little kid and roll his fingerprints on a piece of paper and send him home to his mom, let him write his name on it. And it is, it's modern-day technology right up to snuff with what we would need if we were to have a child go missing, and they need to get this information throughout them. And the thing about this, it's, it's international, we could have it at dinner pole through one email, you know, it's a situation that the finest, the FBI, or the fluff investigating agency in this state can be transferred all over the world.
Yes, this is another thing, too, that's kind of an afterthought, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, if you don't mind, but if you think about a parent in the, in the, say, their child has been abducted, and the law enforcement goes to them and starts trying to ask them questions how to identify the child, and how difficult that would be. If they have this kit at home, all they have to do is go pull that kit out and hand it to law enforcement, and there is all the information on that child, on that CD. Now, if, in a period of time, if the parent feels like that is gone, you know, and it's no longer relevant, as things have changed, then they can come back and get another one, it's just that simple. And we charge it, and that's, one more thing.
That's okay.
We get nothing, we charge nothing for this.
But the machine would belong to you all?
No, it belongs to the city.
It would belong to the city, but...
It would be useful.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, it would...
But you all would oversee the...
It would be in our control, yes.
I think this might be something that is already into the first reading on the budget, if Tina don't care to kind of look over the budget and see what, what can be done and present it to us at the next meeting.
For this year, okay.
On behalf of that young lady over Rogerville that's missing, I think we need, you know, they're going through that, pardon my French, that hell on earth of a missing child, so I think on behalf of her, and my heart goes out for them, so I think we need to really consider this and try to do it the right way.
Is everybody okay with Tina checking that out? See what we can do for that?
I wanted to finish up there, Mayor, just by saying, oh, holding that safe, usually have, like, every 53 seconds, you got Tom missing. I'm sure as they can see, when we cover, and this program, two kids, two children, and that's what went next, and it's her handprints on the next app.
Yeah. Every year, one day a year, the Secret Service wires this tie as memorial to this. This is the handprints of children that have been recovered through the, through the program.
Well, it's sad we're living in times like this, but it's, it's...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You give us a hand, we're gonna...
Thank y'all for all you do for kids and the whole community.
Schroders sale this weekend.
It is.
Thank you, Jimmy. Comments from citizens? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? I didn't hear any.